I'd like to welcome you to our May 28th, 2020 virtual meeting of the city council. We hope you and our families are staying safe and healthy. Tonight's council meeting is the fourth council meeting we are conducted using communications. Media technology is authorized by executive order of the governor during the current pandemic. We appreciate your patience and assure you that your city council remains committed to providing the public affair and reasonable opportunity to participate in council meetings. We sincerely appreciate your continued understanding as we work through this temporary manner of conducting meetings. To tonight's meeting participants, as the presiding officer, I request that each council member or designated staff member request that they be recognized by me before speaking. I will do my best to quickly recognize and call upon you. All participants should use the mute function and only unmute yourself when you seek to be recognized to speak and while you are speaking. Also, please remember that this meeting is being broadcast to the public and therefore we request that you eliminate any background distractions you may have at your location. Prior to the council taking final action on any agenda item, applicants or members of the public who are present in the public access area will be recognized to address the council. Applicants and members of the public who have pre-registered to address the specific agenda item through communications media technology will be recognized to address the council. And email or written statements that have been timely submitted will be read into the record. The normal rules I stated earlier regarding public comments still apply. We thank you for your cooperation and efforts to ensure the council meeting is conducted in the best interest of the city of St. Cloud. With that, I call this meeting to order. And we'd like to begin with our invocation. The invocation will be delivered by Pastor Alden Whiteman, pastor of the Amazing Grace Baptist Church. After which, if we could please stand and we will have our pledge of allegiance. Pastor Whiteman, it's good to have you here.
Our gracious father, we're so grateful to be able to have this meeting tonight and meet here tonight, oh your grace. As we face so many trials across our state, across our nation. We ask your intercession on wisdom and guidance on how to handle these things that come upon us for the coronavirus. Protect our county, protect our people, protect our state. Bring this thing to an end. We pray our father to intercede with each individual, our businesses and our people. Protect our elderly and watch over them and keep them well. Lord, tonight we've had a horrendous storm. We just prayed for rain. We thank you that you brought rain, but it's a tremendous storm. Make our highways safe tonight. Watch over those that'll be driving in the flooded highways. Well, we thank you for being able to continue to have this meeting. In light of all the problems, I pray your wisdom and guidance to the council. Grant him our father the kind of leadership that they need to have to bring this county in a way and lead this county in a way that brings glory to you. Be with the men and the women and all these others that are part of this county forum and all the ones that work in the offices and watch over them. Help them our father in the work that they have to do. Keep them safe abundantly above measure. Uplift them our father. It's an awesome off and calling that they have to do the ministry, to do the work because it deals with us, our finances, our personal needs, our personal lives, you know, everything else about that. We ask your grace, your help, your strength on each one. On leadership on Osceola County, upon St. Cloud and the lordly leadership here. We ask in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Wright.
Amen.
Please join me in our pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, we'll have the roll call. Madam Clerk.
Mayor Blackwell?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Here.
Councilmember Cooper?
He's here. He.
I'm here.
Thank you. Councilmember Askew?
Here.
Councilmember Trace?
Here.
At this time, there are no presentations, which brings us to our citizens forum. Madam Clerk, is there anyone in the chamber or online that is wishing to speak during the citizens forum?
At this time, we have no one in person in the chambers and no one that has registered to speak under this section of the agenda.
Then thank you. That brings us to our consent agenda. And before we begin our consent agenda, I'd like to recognize our city manager, I think, who has some corrections to make.
Yes, sir. Thank you, mayor. I have a couple scrubbers errors and I apologize. We have a software which we've identified. Item D and E in the consent agenda, under cost, it says fire alarm contractor. That's striped through and it should be water-based fire suppression and backflow contractor. Again, under the cost section of D and E, strike through fire alarm contractor, water-based fire suppression and backflow contractor. Again, everything in the backup package is correct. The next item is item J. Again, under cost, strike fire alarm contractor and insert temporary staffing, direct hire and other employer. And then item O, P and Q. Again, under the cost section, fire alarm contractor, it's continuing professional architectural services. And then I'd like to pull item K for clarification also.
I think S had an issue as well with the cost showing up as solid waste instead of wastewater treatment.
Okay. Would you clarify?
It's a grant application. Item S, I think it had the same, pulled in the wrong cost code. But it's a grant application, so I don't think it makes a big difference.
But thank you for pointing. I didn't realize that. Okay, thank you. Wrong cost allocation code.
Okay, all of those changes are noted and agreed to? Are there any items that any of the council members are wanting to address? If not, Mr. Sturgeon, will you clarify, share your clarification for item K?
Yes, sir. Item K, under grant, it says disaster recovery CDBGDR program for the purpose of replacing or lining. Removing the word replacing, this grant is for lining, aging and worn metal drainage infrastructure. We are not replacing pipes, we're just lining them.
Understand. Are there any other questions?
No, sir.
All right. Well, thank you. First of all, is there anyone in the council chambers or online that has requested to speak to the consent agenda?
I have no one in person or no one online that has registered for the consent agenda.
Thank you. Then we'll have discussion and our motion by council. Mr. Dave?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Councilmember Askew, a second from Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Trace?
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
And I just want to have one comment about it. There were a bunch of grant applications in here. I just want to give kudos to staff for all the work that goes into those grant applications. There was three or four of them in here that provide some good benefit for the city.
That is certainly worth noting. Thank you so much for bringing that word of commendation. Councilmember Trace. Well, if I'm correct, that brings us to public hearings. Madam Clerk, could you please read the first item under public hearings?
Second and final public hearing for ordinance number 2020-15. In ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud amending chapter 44 utilities, article two sanitary sewer systems, section 44-113 sanitary sewer account. Name amending article four potable water section 44-332 potable water facility account name. Amending article seven stormwater section 44-536 billing and payment penalties. Amending chapter 22 emergencies. Article two, division two, section 22-35 schedule of usage fees in chapter 36 solid waste. Article two, section 36-36 initiation of solid waste collection fees. Clarifying certain procedural requirements for establishing a ministry in portable water sanitary sewer, stormwater EMS and solid waste utility accounts as set by resolution providing for durability conflicts codification and effective date.
Thank you. Do we have a staff member speaking to this item?
Brian or Marjorie? I know they're out. Marjorie's dealing with all flooding issues.
Hi, I'm sorry.
Marjorie?
Flooding issue.
There she is.
Brian, you want to handle this? I gotta take care of the flooding issue. Are you still there? This particular?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes. Thanks.
Brian, would you please speak to this item?
Yeah, this is the second public hearing of the ordinance related to changing the code to provide for being able to bill the EMS fees, stormwater fees, et cetera. Those miscellaneous fees that are billed individually to tenants in rental units where we have master meters that have those fees associated with the master meter and their single account that provides a means for the city then to enforce a collection of those fees whereas under the individual situation where they the count is not tied to a water meter, to a water meter, the ability to collect delinquent fees is difficult for the city.
Thank you. Do you have anything else?
No, that's it. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the council chambers, madam clerk, to speak to this item or online?
I have no one in person or online to speak on this item.
Then we'll entertain discussion and or motion by council.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion from councilmember Matheny. We have a second from whom?
Mr. Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. A second from councilmember Cooper. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Clerk, will you please read item number two on the public hearings?
Second and final public hearing for ordinance number 2020-19. In ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, providing a local vendor preference for Osceola County individuals, firms or companies with regard to procurement of products, materials, services by the city of St. Cloud. Providing that qualified local vendors shall in certain instances be provided local vendor preference with regard to net bid prices if the local vendor is otherwise qualified, fully qualified to meet the city requirements, providing that all provisions of the city procurement policy and applicable laws shall remain in effect and apply to governed purchases by the city, providing for durability conflicts, effective date and automatically repeal.
Thank you. We'll recognize Ms. Flores.
Good evening, mayor. This is the second and final public hearing for the establishment of a local preference.
Could you please share your name and position?
I, this is Leslie Flores, procurement services director.
Thank you.
So again, this is the second and final public hearing for the establishment of local preference, ordinance number 2015-20 automatically repealed in March of 2017. And there is a need to promote business enterprises that own property and operate businesses and offices and employ individuals within Osceola County. This would establish a local preference for all goods and services except may be exempted by federal and state law. They're not applicable in federal grants for most of the state construction grants. The local preference would apply to all Osceola County persons, firms or corporations which meet the one or more of the established criteria. And it would result in the local vendor being awarded a contract at the amount of the lowest submitted bid. If the local vendor's bid is the next lowest bid within 5% of that low bid by a non-local vendor. And staff is recommending approval of ordinance 2020-19 and requesting council approval of ordinance 2020-19.
Thank you, Ms. Flores. Madam Clerk, is there anyone in the chambers or online to speak to this item?
I have no one in person in the chambers or online to speak on this item.
Thank you very much. With that, I'll entertain a discussion and our motion by council.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from councilmember Matheny and a second from
Second.
Second.
And a second from councilmember Trace. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. That brings us to council action. Madam Clerk, could you please read the first item?
Discussion and possible action regarding skate park design build project.
Thank you. With that, we'll recognize Ms. Holcamp. Is that correct?
That is correct. Good evening, mayor, council. Stephanie Holcamp, Parks and Recreation Director. The item in front of you is the design build skate park project. As you can see on there, the skate park is located out in the extreme sports complex, which is off Peg Horn Way. Just some background information. And this project was originally brought to you back at the October 10th city council meeting. At that time, you guys had approved a partial contract for the conceptual design, public input, geotechnical study and the design development construction documents. To date, we've had two public meetings. Anywhere between 40 and 50 people were in attendance. At each meeting, we received 45 written comments. The geotechnical study was also completed and it was determined that additional borings would be needed to ensure the site is suitable for the skate park design. To be exact, there was four additional borings that would be needed for roughly additional cost of $3,200. On the next slide, from the public comments that we received, both the written and verbal comments, this was this was the design that Team Payne had come up with. And I believe that he is on the, he is on the line too, if there's any questions specifically for the contractor. It's in line with our growth management goal and infrastructure goal. At this time, we're asking the city to release the balance of the funding to move forward with the skate park design build project. This will help us not have to come back to you every time that there's an issue for, like the boring issue. Staff recommends approval and we're requesting the council approve the release of the funding for this project.
Thank you very much. But you said Tim Payne was here?
Yes, sir.
Would he like to speak to this?
Can you hear me? This is Tim Payne.
I can hear you fine.
Thank you. Um, I would like to say that this is a very unique design and all the individuals that showed up to the public input meeting were positive and respectful. It was one of the, you know, really memorable meetings that I have done in the last year. The thing that was produced out of this meeting is really a unique design that's not anywhere else in central Florida. So I know that the community is excited about getting to ride this. So thank you guys for the opportunity. We really appreciate you choosing our company to do the work.
You have anything else?
Yes, sir.
First of all, is there anyone in the council chambers or online to speak to this item, madam clerk?
I do not have anyone in the chambers. I also had a staff member, Vanessa Tina, from our project management that is available if anybody had any questions of her also.
Okay.
That's all they have that registered.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Matheny, are you wanting to speak to this item?
Yes, please.
You're.
I'm up.
At the floor.
Well, first of all, I had the opportunity to go to the first public public meeting on this. I didn't get to go to the second one, but Mr. Trace was at the first one with me, so he can vouch for this. It was a really, really, really good, I thought, turnout and engagement. And I was super excited to see like such a, like such a cross-section of ages, but there were so many like younger folks there. So I was really happy that they came, you know, cared about it enough to come out and give their comments and really were engaged with that. So one of the things I wanted to ask Tim, which he covered, was just, you know, like, are we gonna have a unique skate park in the, in the, in the area? You know, I didn't want to end up with a skate park that's similar to one in Kissimmee or whatever. So, you know, he just covered that and said it's a, it's a unique design. I thought there was going to be a bowl included in the design when I had my briefing. Stephanie, did I misunderstand that?
Yeah, so there's not going to be a design. Let me go back to, let me go back to that. So we can't really, we can't really have a bowl design within this, even if we're phased for phase two. That's why we need the additional borings because we won't know where on this plan the bowl's going to sit until we have those additional.
Borings.
Borings, yes.
Right, but your intention is that somewhere within this footprint, there will be a bowl?
That's on phase two, correct.
Okay. So I wanted to just double check that. And then, you know, you showed the aerial that shows the existing skate park right now. Is this skate park bigger? It looks like it's maybe two times larger than what's out there now. Like, what, what is the relationship to the size we have right now?
No, it's 10,000 square feet. That's, that's currently what we have now. And Tim might might be able to comment on that. It might be a little more than 10,000, but.
It looks like it's a long rectangle in your, in your sketch. So.
Yes. I can interject. Yes, what we did is when you're writing elements, it's a lot easier to write when it's longer. So we took the hundred by hundred area and cut it in half and made it 200 by 50. So basically, it's about 190 feet by 55 feet or something like that. And that gives a lot more potential for maneuvers to happen. It, you know, it's a lot better than a square facility.
Okay, that's great. I just, you know, when I just saw the comparison, I was like, I wasn't sure how they compared as far as as area. And also Stephanie, maybe could you go over the phasing? Because I think the landscaping and the shade structures or maybe future phases, it's not included in this approval.
Yeah, the shade structure that you see on there will be phase two. Also, lighting is phase two along with the bowl. The landscaping, we'll do that in-house, so that will take. That'll happen after this part of phase one is constructed.
Okay, so is there any thought? I, I know I'm someone who gets burnt up like a tater tot when I'm outside. So is there any thought to, you know, shade over the skate park? Like those sail cloths or something to kind of cut the, I know that's got to be hot out there on the concrete in the middle of the summer.
Yeah, we have, we have some shade options in phase two to put it actually over the whole skate park. You know, there isn't, I mean, we probably could, could find something, but, you know, cost-wise, I don't, I don't think that's reasonable, but there will be shady spots, but the whole thing would not be shaded.
Ms. Matheny, do you have any other questions? You're coming, you're cutting in now.
I'm sorry, my power went out. Yeah, my power went out. Did you see that? It was like I went dark and came back. So I missed, I missed the end of what Stephanie said. There's shade contemplated in the next phase?
Go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Holcamp.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Yes, we have budgeted for shade in phase two. But to shade the entire skate park, you know, we won't be able to do that. I mean, financially, it would, it would be extremely expensive. So there'll be different areas around the skate, skate area that will have shade, correct?
Okay, yeah, because on this sketch, you know, it's just got the two little areas, like I would imagine where like parents would be sitting. But yeah, if there was something we could do, I, I understand you can't cover the entire thing, but at least to provide some larger areas of shade, I think that would be fantastic. But thank you for all the hard work and I know the staff person that's the project manager has been working really hard on this too. And, and I think the mayor is excited to get out there and, and ride his skateboard.
Have you, have you bought your skateboard yet?
No.
I want to see yours first. Is there any, are there any other questions or comments I see, Ms. Quavens?
No, no comments.
Okay. Anyone else? Ms. Matheny, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, motion to approve.
Second.
And we have a second from councilmember Cooper. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. And it carries. Madam Clerk, will you read item number two under council action?
Discussion and possible action regarding mudder road extension.
Okay, do we have a staff member to speak to this?
Mayor Cooper.
Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes, Nassim Gandor, Public Works Director.
Thank you.
Um, mayor, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Nassim just stuck his head in here. He was out in full-fledged water gear right now. So he's running, he's getting into the council chambers so he can address you. He had issues with his computer.
All right.
So he should be in the, he should be getting on.
Yes, that's what I wanted to address. He is working with Jay right now to get that uploaded.
No, you can't do it. All right. All right, he's gonna, he's gonna come in here and do it from right here. So I'm gonna get out of the way.
All right.
You have the slides?
They, you're gonna have to talk to somebody with the slides. So, mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, you may, Mr. Sturgeon.
Yes, sir. We have significant flooding in the city. In fact, Highway 192 shut down right now. I'm kidding. The crews are out trying to unplug stormwater drains. But both lanes of 192 in the area of Minnesota are closed down.
He can't. Marjorie wants to drive.
Utilities crews, all the crews out trying to.
They're gonna do it on Marjorie's drive? Okay.
Yeah.
Well, the staff certainly have their hands full tonight, then.
I'm sorry, mayor. Mr. Gandor is running down the Marjorie spot so he cannot access the PowerPoint. Couldn't access it from where, from
You're not gonna call it up?
My desk. So Marjorie's on his way down to see you.
Okay.
Okay.
So just give us a couple minutes. We apologize for that.
Can I? No problem. Mr. Sturgeon, do you have something else to share?
Yes, sir. If I could, if I could do that, I'd like to share some.
I'm calling up.
Today, the Division of Historical Resources and the State, Department of State of Florida approved the nomination of the Veterans Memorial Library and Women's Club Auditorium for nomination to the National Registry of Historic Places. The vote was unanimous and the state will now forward to the National Park Service in Washington DC for ratification. So.
That was excellent. Ms. Horning did an excellent job, I thought.
She did.
From her perspective.
I'd like to thank the council for all their emails, the resolution. And you and I sitting for three hours of, it was very tedious. We were last. So that's really, really good news. The second thing, wanted to let you guys know that, that we're working towards resuming our regular in-person council meetings for June 25th. We think that it will be in phase two for the state and we will still have to practice some of the safe distancing and other protocols, but we think we can have an in-person meeting. Now for the bad news. You know, we looked at this from different angles, but all of this. Now for the bad news, um, you know, we looked at this from different angles, um, but all of the surrounding areas are canceling their Fourth of July fireworks. And we were gonna do kind of a drive-through, uh, fireworks display, but everybody's gonna show up in St. Cloud. We have no way to control the crowd, so I'm gonna recommend we cancel the Fourth of July fireworks this year. Um, pray for a great Fourth of July in twenty twenty-one, and I just wanted to get consensus from the council to do that. It breaks my heart to do it, but I'm gonna have to recommend we cancel. Well, I certainly hate to see us cancel that also, but all the other cities are doing so, uh, because of the management of the issue. Are there any objections from any one of the council, uh, for what Mr. Sturgeon, our city manager, is recommending in regard to the fireworks? I know that our residents will be greatly disappointed, but we've had a lot of challenges recently. So we have a consensus then, Mr. Sturgeon.
Thank you.
Nassim, are you available now? Do you have anything else to share with Mr. Sturgeon?
No, sir, unless you wanna hear some bad jokes.
Okay, Nassim's ready.
Yeah, I'm, I'm ready to share my screen.
Okay, I'll recognize Mr. Gandoor then.
All right, all right. Well, thank you very much. This is Nassim Gandoor, Public Works Director. I apologize for, uh, being itself. I was out, uh, out and about with the, uh, with the city, with the storm here, with the storm, and also, apparently, when I came back, my computer had, uh, technical issues and died. Uh, so, uh, that being said, we're gonna go ahead and proceed with the Mutter Road extension presentation. Uh, and, you know, my road, I got, yeah, my road extension, uh, presentation. Uh, so there's an overview of the Mutter Road, uh, extension, the overall goals for this project, uh, is, uh, so the extension project is to connect, uh, Old Canoe Creek Road to Peghorn Way, uh, yeah, Peghorn Way, excuse me. Uh, so the south of the community center and north of, uh, the Southwest Transfer Station, and, uh, and finalize the, finalize the road, uh, Mutter Road, uh, uh, finalize the Mutter Road connection. Now, this is per the Transportation Mobility Plan, uh, as well as, um, the provided pedestrian, uh, connection, uh, which is between the, between Old Canoe Creek Road and Boninger Avenue, which is part of the Trails Master Plan. Uh, the purpose for this extension is to, is to provide a reduced emergency vehicle response time to the St. Cloud Medical Hospital. There we go. Yeah, I got, uh, so this is a slide. This slide shows the overview, um, of the project location. Uh, you can see Old Canoe Creek Road is along the, uh, left side of the screen, which is the west, and Boninger Avenue is along the right side of the screen, which is the east. And, um, the, uh, red line connector, uh, on the right-hand side shows, uh, the community center on the north side and the Southwest Transfer Station on the south side, along with connecting up to the Extreme Sports Complex, which we just had present, awesome presentation on as well. This slide shows, uh, kind of a, uh, drill, drill-down view of that same area, showing the proposed extension. As you can see on the left-hand side, uh, you can, there is, uh, there is concrete, so Mutter Road does, uh, there is Mutter Road, which goes all the way to the community, uh, the house, uh, residential community, and, uh, but this extension will complete the roadway connected to Peghorn Way. The, this slide shows the matrix of the two options that we were, we're, that we're proposing. Uh, the first one is emergency access recreational trail, uh, a design option for emergency access recreational trail, which involves, uh, a, uh, providing a twelve-foot emergency access road and a ten-foot recreational trail, um, as well as, uh, provide, uh, as separators, uh, uh, between the two, between the two, uh, use of the, of that roadway. The, uh, emergency access road will be, uh, accessed through preemptive gate control, like, um, much like you see, uh, uh, elsewhere around, uh, cities, uh, where the emergency vehicles have to get through a gate system. Uh, the funding on this, um, we, we, uh, we apply for state funding, uh, if we, this option would, uh, require us to notify the state of a change of scope of the design, uh, from the first option being a full access road to be a emergency access road. Uh, in terms of land requirements, uh, there is no land, uh, land requirements or actions that's, that would be required of this, and we estimate this project will cost about one point five, four, five million dollars. The second option is a full access road with, with a recreational trail. Uh, this, what this would do is construct a, uh, two-lane roadway, uh, connecting, uh, Canoe, Old Canoe Creek Road to Peghorn Way, uh, and each, and each of the, uh, travel roadway, uh, roadways would, the lane would be about eleven feet long, or eleven feet wide, excuse me, and, uh, with a, uh, with a sidewalk recreational trail alongside on one side of the roadway. Um, on this particular one, we would have screen walls, uh, which would be installed, uh, along the roadway, uh, adjacent to the residential areas. Uh, in regards to state funding that we have applied for, uh, this option would not require any kind of, uh, notification to the state, uh, prior to their decision of state funding. Uh, in terms of, uh, uh, land requirements and action, uh, there would be a action in regards to, uh, Track H, which was on the previous slide, uh, shown just roughly north of the retention pond, uh, due to the fact that the recreational track shows, excuse me, the Track H shows for recreational use. The estimated construction cost for this is approximately one point five million dollars. This slide shows a cross-section, a typical cross-section, the first option being the, uh, emergency access and recreational trail. Uh, we're showing that each, uh, the twelve-foot emergency access lane and a ten-foot, uh, recreational trail. This slide shows a cross-section, uh, of the full access road with recreational trail. Uh, this shows eleven-foot travel lanes on, on each side, as well as a five-foot, uh, walkway, um, recreational trail as well. This slide talks, this slide talks about the, uh, Track H challenges. Track H, as I've stated before, is, uh, is shown as for recreational use. Uh, and, uh, however, this, uh, uh, going through this section of the trail, um, we would have a uh, five-foot, uh, wide walkway, uh, or recreational trail, which would, uh, be less than our ten-foot, the ten-foot wide requirement. However, this requirement can be waived by the city manager. Uh, the other, uh, challenge we have on there is the plot language that shows that, uh, Track H is for recreational use. And then the third bullet, uh, shows that, uh, due to uncertainty of entitlement of, uh, Track H, that, uh, other necessary actions would be, may be required, uh, in order for this, uh, city to, uh, be able to utilize, uh, the use of Track H for a full access road. This slide shows the public meetings, uh, the past public meetings that we've had already for this particular, uh, project. Uh, for, on January ninth, two thousand nineteen, we had a public meeting. On January twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, we've had a city council presentation. Both of those were presented by my predecessor, uh, Ms. Rawley, as well as the project, uh, the city, uh, the city's project engineer, as well as the design engineer on this project. Uh, also shows the meeting that we're currently having right now, presented by myself, um, May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty, and then the proposed, uh, future meetings that we would have uh, for this particular, uh, for this particular project, uh, state council, uh, meeting to discuss Track H, uh, use and direction, as well as a public meeting. Uh, both of those, uh, would be dates to be determined. So what we're asking is for direction on, uh, the Mutter Road extension, uh, whether to use, uh, whether the council would like to proceed with the option, uh, the first option being, uh, emergency access road with recreational trail or full access road, uh, through. That's the end of my presentation.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there anyone else in the chamber or online to speak to this item?
I have no one in the chambers at this time and no one online that has registered.
Thank you. It will entertain discussion and our motion by council.
Mr. Mayor, may?
Yes, Mr. Manzera.
Thank you, sir. So if I can just follow up on some of the comments that Nassim brought forward with regard to Track H, uh, just so remember, remind everybody of the history, uh, and the development of this. So Track H was a, at one point was actually right, right-of-way that, uh, was part of the, was the Mutter Road right-of-way through this area. In two thousand and five, the city council abandoned that right-of-way at the request of the neighboring development, uh, that was going in there. As part of that abandonment, one of the conditions of the abandonment was that the, the, uh, the, the subdivision that was built, uh, alongside it, which was Pinewood Gardens, would dedicate that Track H back to the city for recreational, uh, access, in, ingress and access. Uh, in December of twenty, of twen, two thousand and five, a plat, a plat was recorded that established Track H. That plat has on it the language that says the, uh, Track H will be used for public recreational ingress and egress, and it's dedicated to the city as well as for a blanket drainage and utility easement. That's what, um, Mr. Gandoor was referring to in his presentation. So the, the, the two, the, the, the way the document reads in the plat is that it's limited to this, uh, uh, public recreational ingress and egress. If the city council is going to move forward with, frankly, with either of these options, the first option being the recreation plus emergency access or the full access road, then that, it is likely that that plat language is gonna come into play, uh, and will have to be addressed, uh, one way or the other. The title report that worked that we've had done, and it shows that the city has entitlement to the property and, and is the owner of that property based on that dedication of Track H in the plat. However, that language that's in the plat puts a, arguably, a restriction on it that would have to be vetted out before, uh, at some point, uh, before either of these options are, 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 are moved forward with. So if the council's gonna move forward with either of these two options, then, uh, the council would, would, we, we're gonna recommend that before, uh, the, the construction starts or any of that, that, uh, that this, this issue be vetted out. The way this issue would get vetted out would be, but basically, what would be asking a court for a determination of the city's rights to use that property for a full-fledged public road or for emergency access. Uh, again, the plat language limits it to the easement for, for drainage and for the, uh, public recreation ingress and egress. So, uh, we would have to, we would have to vet through that. So, uh, if you're gonna move forward with this and move forward with this project, uh, it's gonna be our recommendation that if you want to pursue one of those two options, that, uh, that would include, uh, uh, essentially seeking a determination by a court, uh, by a circuit judge as to the city's rights to use that property as it relates to that plat language, uh, and we move forward with it. So, um, that's a one, that's the hiccup or the step that, uh, Nassim referred to in, with regard to Track H, that we'd have to do that. So, I'm happy to talk more particularly about what that would look like and what that would entail, um, but it would be essentially a, a, uh, similar to a lawsuit, uh, that would be filed in the circuit court, uh, where the adjacent property owners would all be provided notices of that, and they'd have a right to object to that language, uh, to, uh, they would have a right to object to the city's petition with regard to the use of that area of, that Track H for a road. If they may have some questions, I'm happy to talk some more about that.
Thank you. Uh, Deputy Mayor Matheny, it looks like you're ready to speak.
Yeah, that was the clarification I was gonna make, that regardless of which option was presented, you're gonna have to go through that, through the system. Um, I, I, you know, personally, I feel like, you know, I'm not an attorney, but I deal with these eminent domain issues a, a lot, and I, you know, I don't feel like what we have right now in the plat, which has a limitation to public recreation ingress, egress, allows us to do either of these two options. I'm, so my recommendation would be that, why don't, why don't we have Mr. Manzera start the proceedings to quiet the title and see what happens before we, I mean, I don't know why we have to give direction now, because we don't even know if they're gonna be able to quiet the title. Like, why not give direction to move forward and try to do that procedure based on what happens during that conversation, then come back and we make a decision? My recollection, now Ms. Rawley isn't here anymore, but that, that public meeting that they had with the, um, residents in High Lake Estates was pretty angry, and, um, there's an attorney that lives right adjacent to this Track H. I think this is gonna be a, a, a battle. So, I mean, my recommendation would be like not to give direction on which alternative, which, but maybe to move forward and try to do quieting the title and see if that's even plausible.
Mr. Manzera, would you like to speak to that?
Well, and I, and I, and I think Deputy Mayor Matheny's, uh, uh, statement is, is accurate. I mean, one part of the reason why we wanted to talk to you is we wanted to make sure that we had direction from the council about where, which option you wanted to head. So I guess, even though the presentation said that there are two options, there's actually three options. The first option would obviously suggest to use it for ingress and egress to the, uh, uh, to Peghorn, uh, which I think is well within the language that's in the plat already, uh, so. But if you're gonna use any of the two options, I think you need to do it, and you might as well vet that out sooner or later. I think staff's, sooner rather than later, I think staff's issue about it was because, as Deputy Mayor Matheny, Matheny pointed out, there's been a lot of interest from the neighboring property owners on there, and we felt like, uh, it, we're gonna have to file a petition, and we're gonna have to serve those neighbors with a copy of the petition. So we'd wanna make sure at least that they were aware of it, um, in some way, so they're not just surprised at some point. We can reach out to them, and it would be my suggestion that we reach out to them. Uh, we may be able to get, to start a discussion with them, a very short timeframe would be, we would tie to that. Reach out to the neighboring property owners and see if they, what their response would be to this, uh, and then, uh, so at least they're aware of it before, and so they're not just simply blindsided by, you know, by having a, you know, receiving a copy of a petition from our office. And the other second part, this will, this will involve litigation fees and attorney's fees to be able to follow the proceeding. So, uh, 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 the action, the declaration, uh, declaratory judgment or the quiet title action that we're recommending is a little different than an eminent domain proceeding. It is, um, it is, uh, a little less expensive, but it still will involve litigation and, uh, uh, ability to do that, address it, so.
Does anyone else have any questions you would like to ask any other council members?
Mayor, uh, Askew.
Councilmember Askew.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm with Deputy Mayor Matheny. Um, I like the idea of, of kind of vetting it out and seeing where this thing sort of goes. It does, it looks like we gotta vet it out anyways. I mean, that's sort of what you, it sounds like you're toeing the stand, so. I'd like to at least vet it out and then see if it's, uh, collecting what we have.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Cooper. Thank you. I, uh, I agree. I think we ought to go ahead and see if we can get the, the title first. Anyone else? Mr. Trace, you have any?
I, I agree as well, and just, just like any, um, road project, whether it's widening new road, I think there needs to be a lot more public input, um, uh, throughout the process. There's a lot of stuff that individuals that, that live there know about the area that can help out, um, you know, whichever path we go, just help out with the design and with, um, uh, the, the way the area, um, acts and reacts to the, um, the improvements that are made.
Well, I'm certainly in agreement also. Uh, Mr. Manzera, can you give us a little direction here?
Well, here's what I would suggest, if, since it seems like everybody's on the same page about this one, is that, uh, typically, when you do an eminent domain action, there is a, is, there's a whole lot of, uh, pre-suit steps that are taken before you dive into litigation. We can do some of those, uh, that we normally would do, and um, my suggestion would be is that we work with the city manager's office, the city manager essentially send a letter, we draft a letter and send it to the, every one of those property owners, and we invite them individually to have a discussion regarding what the city's potential plan is. Uh, and so at least they would be aware of it, we could talk to them about it. Some of them may say, you know, we're okay with it as long as we have assurances that there's gonna be adequate screening, or we're gonna try to do something about it. They may frankly even say we're okay with it, uh, as long as, uh, you know, the city's willing to sort of compensate us for a change in what's going on in our backyard, or, and in the, in the property behind us. And we can have those discussions with them early on, and we may be able, we may be able to resolve. But the, the worst-case scenario is there is that, is that you tell them everything upfront, and we may, maybe we avoid some of the things that we've seen a lot in these kind of issues that we were never aware, we weren't told, we never had an opportunity to talk to anybody about it, you know, and, and deal with it. So we would suggest that that would, would be a, a, a good initial start, uh, and we would, we, and if they do, if there are attorneys that are involved in it, then we. And we would, and if they do, if there are attorneys that are involved in it, then we would certainly, you know, talk to them about it. It wouldn't necessarily be a condemnation proceeding, but we would, we essentially to deal with it. The good thing about doing it like that, you'll also be able to gauge how strong the opposition is going to be to it and what kind of battle you're into. So which is always, which is always good from a cost perspective and, you know, a time preference perspective and and flat out from a, you know, community service perspective. So that's what we would suggest. So again, we reiterate, we suggest that we work with the city manager's office to notify the neighboring property owners about the potential for this happening, to set maybe individual meetings with them if they want to come sit down and talk to us about it and then see if we can work some things out initially. And if not, we would move forward with a declaratory judgment action and a quiet title action to address the issues.
All right. What do you need from us at this point?
I think we would just need a, you know, some sort of motion that would would follow that course so that we have clear direction from the council. So that would be our recommendation. So if you would like a motion to follow that recommendation, that would be fine if someone would submit, would make that.
Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. I'd like to make that motion and we go ahead and follow that direction.
Do I have a second? I have a second, Councilmember. A motion by Councilmember Cooper, second one, Councilmember Matheny. Any other discussion? Everybody's clear on the motion?
Yeah, I just, I just want to know before we get too terribly deep into hundreds of thousands of dollars with the legal expenses, if just we can be sent some of those numbers of what we're what we're thinking.
Absolutely. We will keep you apprised every step of the way. And and Mr. Sturgeon, I will, we'll circle back with the council and give you a report as to what kind of response we get after we do the initial contact.
Thank you. Mr. Askew, are you wanting to speak?
Yes, Dan, if there's a way that you can make sure that we get or bill, we get notified when they notify the neighbors of whatever letter we send, so we're.
I agree. Madam Clerk, please call the role.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Mr. Manzera, what do you have for us tonight?
I do not have anything further, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much for your input tonight. Mr. Sturgeon, you have anything else for us?
No, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes, sir. What's been going on with the Saint Cloud Hotel lately? I've been kind of away from it.
They are actually working very hard inside of it. I'm supposed to get a tour next week, but like I said, they've got screened in scaffolding, they're working interior. The fire alarm system's hooked up, has electrical power now. And they're going to town.
Okay, and we're still going on Pennsylvania Avenue. We're going right along on that too, right?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
All right. That was the end of it. Thank you, sir.
Good to have you here, Mr. Cooper. I hope you're feeling better.
Yes, sir. I am fine. Thank you.
Good. Councilmember Matheny?
Yeah, I get to go ahead in the lineup. First, I wanted to give a kudos to the city staff for the Memorial Day program that they put on this past Monday. It was a really neat pivot that they did to have a drive through, a drive through ceremony. So we basically like as the cars would come in, there was a sign up that said tune your radio to this particular radio station. They could listen to a program as they went through the cemetery. They had put together a nice little pamphlet. I I thought it was really nice and Congressman Soto was there and he said that most of the Memorial Day celebrations had been canceled because of the COVID. And so, you know, he came to this one and he also gave kudos and said it's the best. It's the best organized and well-run Memorial Day ceremony in the area. So I just wanted to give a kudos to everyone that put that all together. It was, it was a very nice day. I also wanted to read, summarize an email that we, all the council members got. It was a kudos from the Florida Main Street Program, Catherine Beck, to the Saint Cloud Main Street Program. And it's basically, her email was acknowledging Main Streets throughout the state that have gone above and beyond to help guide their businesses through shutdown and reopening process. And so they basically said that the Saint Cloud Main Street has run many dynamic campaigns over the past year and is focused on supporting your downtown businesses over the last two months. I believe this attributed to the stability of your downtown business district. So basically, they got, you know, a big kudos from the from the state program, which I thought was really, really nice. I forwarded it over to Ms. Paula Stark, make sure she could share with her staff. And the last thing I have is for the city manager. Could you give us an update on the 17th Street sidewalk project? It seems like this has been dragging on for a long time, so I'm hoping we're pretty close to starting construction.
Naseem, can you give us an update on that? Hope you didn't step out. Or Venesina?
Yes, I I am here, but I have no knowledge about the project. I'm sitting at my back.
There's nothing.
No, this is Leslie. I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we we have the bid documents almost complete and they will go out next week.
Thank you. And what's the timeline?
Um, I don't have it with me, but I can send it to you.
No, I mean for the 30 days, right?
30 days, correct. Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Trace?
I'm having issues with my headphones. Can Dave go first? Sorry.
I don't have anything, but I can stall for Keith if it's possible.
Okay, sorry.
I appreciate everything everybody's doing and everybody's holding there, man. Hopefully we get through this.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm back.
Councilmember Trace?
Yeah, I just want to bring up some complaints I've I've gotten just kind of around the Hickory Tree Road area up close to 182, all the industrial areas over there. I know there's the the mixed plant, there's concrete operation, a couple of other things. I've just been getting the the number of complaints I've been getting in the area about late night work, early work, weekend work is just, you know, I brought it up during my briefing. I just wanted to kind of bring it up during the meeting and see if anyone else was receiving the same same complaints or if it was just kind of, I end up knowing a lot of people that live in that area. I brought it up during the briefing and I believe code enforcement is looking into it and trying to remedy the situation.
Okay.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, you may.
Yes, thank you. Yes, Mr. Trace, code enforcement has been out there. They are monitoring the situation and gathering information. The complaints you have are legitimate. We will deal with that from a code enforcement perspective. And I think if if I recall correctly, Deputy Mayor brought up several weeks ago about another concrete plant, talking about spinning up in the area. So I talked to Mr. Anderson and one of the things and and we think we can do is put a quota in that area. Again, because we have such a large construction developments going on in our community, maybe we need to think about, can we put a quota for so many of these plants? Because I I think it's going to cause more and more problems. And this has been a long time, this issue, just with that one plant, and we're going to have another plant. And I just think you're going to keep, I'd rather have staff spend time on other important things than tracing complaints and power from concrete plants.
Do you mean a cap? You mean a cap on the number?
Yeah, a cap, yes, a cap or a quota. Is that something you want me to look into and bring something back in the next couple of weeks, couple of months?
I didn't support the first plant, so.
Okay.
I think we would certainly be in favor of that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Trace. I too would like to thank all of the staff for the excellent job they did for the drive through Memorial Day. They really did an excellent job. I got a lot of thumbs up and kudos on that. Excellent job. I'd also like to thank Mr. Wheeler and all the guys in the water department who have been taking care of recent complaints about water, especially as you've been trying to clean the lines and then still having to turn around and to deal with the complaints. And thank you for your, the positive way that you've handled that and just keep up the good work. The last thing that I have is the U.S. Congress of Mayors is asking that this coming Monday, June the 1st, be set aside as a day of prayer and mourning. And they're calling it a day of lament to remember the 100,000 deaths that have taken place with COVID as we pass that milestone. And they're asking cities all across the United States to join them in remembering all the deaths that have taken place, the families that are struggling, as well as all of the challenges that have faced the communities because of the COVID crisis. And so if there's no objections to the council, I would like to join that day of recognition and prayer and mourning for this coming Monday, June the 1st, as a national day of prayer and remembrance to both honor and grieve those who have fallen victim to the COVID virus. And if there's no objections, I'll send you that information, Mr. Sturgeon, to help advance that.
Yes, sir. We will get that information and get your proclamation drafted.
Thank you. I'll send that to you first thing in the morning. With that, we come to our information section and report section. Thursday, June the 4th, there will be a Community Redevelopment Agency meeting at 6:00 PM. I'm assuming that'll be a virtual meeting.
That is correct.
Thursday, June the 11th, will be our next city council meeting at 6:30 PM. I'm assuming that will also be a virtual meeting. We have a report, the warrant list number 12, that is available. You also have available for your review, the tree advisory committee minutes for February, which were approved. With that, there's nothing else on our agenda. Thank all of you for your patience and your participation this afternoon. And with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.